I'll go get the agenda real quick for you. Okay, thank you all for your patience. It is 4:16 at on June 12th. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'll do roll call of planning commission members present Howard Trips.
Here.
Abby Dahman.
Here.
Joey Edwards.
Here.
Lupe Bobadilla. And Jamie Seifer, I believe that he did not come. And county commissioners. I don't see anybody. Commissioner Much. Marcella. Bieber. Okay. Any changes to the agenda?
No, no. Well, actually, one request is that we go ahead and do the file before you today, and then we could go into our discussion and kind of our sharing of the future growth planning maps that we, the Bryce is prepared. So we thought maybe we could reverse the order and do new business before old business.
Should we also do that before update?
Sure, whatever. Yep, that would be just fine as well.
Okay. We have minutes to approve from May 8th and May 22nd. To approve?
Was I here on the 8th? I think I was.
Uh, I think you were here for both of them. If I had that in here. Okay, May 8th, it was Howard, Joey and I.
You'll make the motion to approve the minutes on the 8th.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then on the 22nd, it was Howard, Abby and myself and Jamie Seifer.
All right, we'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the minutes from May 22nd.
The second.
Aye. All in favor, aye. Great. Um, and we're gonna go ahead and start out with file, our new business, which is file 23-08. It's the 1608 Mount Lincoln Drive ADU conditional use permit. I'm gonna start with an opening statement. The Lake County Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners, no. They can just listen to the tape.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, sorry. Will now conduct a joint public hearing. This statement I am reading shall be incorporated into and made part of the record on these proceedings. The Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners have jurisdiction to conduct a joint public hearing on a conditional use permit application under section 3.6.1 of the Lake County Land Development Code. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether the conditional use permit application should be approved. In considering that matter, the commission will address the approval criteria set forth in section 3.6.1.f of the Lake County Land Development Code. The procedure to be followed in this hearing will be: One, members of the commission and the board will disclose if there's any ex parte communications. Two, the county staff will make an initial presentation. Three, the applicant may then make their presentation. Four, after that, any persons either supporting or opposing the application may present their evidence. Five, supporting and opposing witnesses may be questioned by the commission and the board. Once questioning is concluded, no further questioning is permitted unless granted by the chair. Six, the applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. The parties and witnesses are asked not to submit redundant or relevant or cumulative evidence. If someone has already made the point that you wish to make, please simply say so. The chair will also require that all comments be made to the Planning Commission and the board, and that there be no dialogue between the applicant and the members of the audience. At the conclusion of the evidentiary portion of the hearing, the chair will entertain a motion to close evidentiary portion of the hearing, and the commission will discuss and weigh the evidence. Then there will be a motion to close the discussion phase of the joint public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners, if present, will then retire from the meeting, and the Chair of the Planning Commission will entertain a motion on the application. The motion may take the form of one of the following recommendations. One, approve the application with no conditions. Two, approve the application with recommended conditions. Three, approve the application with newly identified conditions. Or four, deny the application. The Planning Director shall make a record of any substantial discussion on the motion and include that in the record with the recommendation of the commission. The commission's recommendation will be in the form of a statement of motion. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the commission or to the form or substance of these proceedings? Okay, hearing none, I will now ask each Planning Commission member if you've had any ex parte communications to disclose, and if so, to please do so now. Uh, Howard Trips.
None.
Joey Edwards?
None.
Abby Dahman?
No.
Heather Lynn, none. Okay. And can now make your initial presentation.
Thank you. File 2308 is a conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit in West Park. So the reason that this conditional use permit is appropriate is because the property is located on less than an acre. Just keeping in mind, these eventually, we have talked about making these administrative decisions, but we haven't had time yet to get to that code amendment. So because of that, we're bringing it to you today for consideration. This is a rehabilitation remodel project to an existing home at 1608 Mount Lincoln Drive. And I think I mentioned it in the staff report, and I think it's worth, there's merit in recognizing that this property had a history of being a 9904 violation, which means junk rubbish and general disarray. And since this new owner and the property has transferred ownership, the property is looking substantially better, which is, you know, always a desired outcome. So no longer is CPD pursuing compliance and enforcement on the property. Instead, we have an application that will result in the rehabilitation of this property. The accessory dwelling unit is going to be located in the unfinished basement of the property. And the application was duly noticed to all of the referral agencies listed. Staff received no comment or either from the notices that were sent out to the adjacent property owners or anything adverse from any of the referral agencies. So we're not bringing forth any concerns or conditions other than what you might hear today in public comment. One of the things that was mentioned within the application, and is discussed within the staff report, is a statement that was in the application that the property owner, Steve and Arbor, does not have an interest in short-term renting this property. We did talk to the applicant, Matt Bullock, when he came in for the pre-application meeting and said it really is the desire of this property owner to use this as a long-term rental. So noteworthy, A, that we would applaud a property owner for using their accessory dwelling unit as a long-term rental in our current housing crisis. But also, it should be noted that typically standard in every application, we may get a condition of anything, any statements in the application or in hearing that are made by the applicant. So staff has recommended that condition, but in this particular instance, it would be really good to verify potentially how the property owner feels about a condition of this property being used as a long-term rental in perpetuity. A conditional use permit runs with land, so that would mean it would have an impact on future owners. And so just some careful consideration if that condition would be applied. And making sure, I think, that the owner is well aware of the fact that that was included, that language was included in the application. And to just make sure that if that condition was imposed, everyone would understand what that means. And I think you would be looking for a voluntary participation in that by the property owner versus just moving forward with that condition. But thought that that should be pointed out. They have met all of the, they either have met or will meet through the building permit process, all of the use standards associated with an accessory dwelling unit. Specifically, they have made, the application itself is applicable because it's under an acre. And they're only proposing one accessory dwelling unit. It is attached to the primary use. They have, do have a plan to add parking in more than what code requires. They are gonna put in an additional four parking places for a total of eight off-street, keeping the parking in that area. Just given the layout of the street and the location, we have some other properties that we are working on some off-street parking. So this would certainly be a benefit in that area to have off-street parking associated with the increased degree of use. Ownership, they have acknowledged and understood that they cannot separate these two units. They do meet the dimensional standards associated with the zone district. Again, they are not increasing or changing the footprint of the existing home. Adequate facilities, the water and sanitation will be addressed as part of their building permit application process. Same with electricity, fire protection and access. So the access is already established, no need to establish any new driveway. But the fire department does review plans before we issue the building permit. And the same with the water and sewer. We do have to have will serve letters from both of those utility companies, recognizing the new expanded use of the property before we would issue the building permit. So conditions of approval have been demonstrated in the application or suggested that they would be completed a building permit, and that's completely appropriate. The approval criteria, the applicant has made a case within the application that has been provided in the staff report, meeting all of the criteria. And there are some comments from staff throughout the staff report, all of which would align with agreement with the applicant that they have indeed met the approval criteria. And staff has not brought any concerns forward that any of those criteria might be falling short. Suggested motions have been provided for an approval, conditional approval and a denial. And so again, just pointing out that that the approval would be contingent upon all standards pursuant to the Land Development Code Section 5.3.1b, that we just went through being adequately met at the time of the building permit. And then to that statement that we've talked about, all statements made by the applicant in the application and hearing shall be considered conditions of approval. And in this particular case, just wanting to make sure that we highlight if that was applied, what that would mean. And so hearing from the applicant or the applicant's representative on the intent to align with those statements in perpetuity would benefit the Planning Commission and the board to hear. The other thing that I would note is that the Board of County Commissioners are currently at, in Canyon City, at a meeting. And they all, I will immediately after tonight forward this recording to them so that they can hear it, so that they can watch the hearing, even though they're not here this evening. They will be, have all of the same information before we take the recommendation to them next week. So we've queued that up for them. And I think that is all that staff has, unless the Planning Commission has any questions. So Matt Bullock is here on behalf of the application. And so I would turn it over to you Heather and to Matt.
Yeah, Matt, if you have any additional presenting items that you would like to add or...
I'll have to go and follow him.
She usually takes, she usually does that to people. Great, well, we'll ask questions as needed then, as we get, or if you find a time when you want to insert something, just let me know. At this time, we will entertain comments or questions from members of the public. And did we get somebody to sign people in? Somewhere that we'll need to sign some people in. And then same with those online. Those of you on Zoom, if you wouldn't mind, please, if you would like to speak or if you have a question or comment on this application, you can go ahead and raise your hand and we can call on you accordingly. Yes, sir. Please just state your name. Yeah, thank you.
Just out of curiosity, if the main floor were intended to a rental unit, would it need to be long-term or would it have the option of short-term? Just out of curiosity.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I think that's where, and that was a question I had as well, but if we classified the ADU tonight as only being long-term, then essentially we're saying the ADU itself can only be long-term. So I think that's, that's a good question as to how, Matt, you feel the applicant wants to handle that?
He wants to rent long-term.
No matter what.
Up and down.
Okay.
He lives in Denver, he's not gonna live here.
Okay.
So then we would just specify that specifically as the condition.
And if somebody in the future, just thinking about it down the road, wanted to short-term rent, they would come to us for an amendment to their CFP. So it's not like it's like a deed restriction that happens. It's just as far as clarifying that for folks, like if that ever changed in the future, they could potentially come and then see if it would get approved to change it back to allow that use.
So even though the hearing is only for the ADU, we could put the restriction on the main floor unit as well?
No, it's just for the, for the ADU. The, the application and, and like Matt affirmed, says that, you know, the intent is to rent both units, but it would be, the only thing that you're deciding on today is the ADU. So we wouldn't have a authority over anything other than that.
So if the homeowner changes his mind and wants to be short-term on the fresh floor, we could be short-term on the fresh floor?
Yeah, and depending on where we end up on short rentals.
Yeah. Any other questions? Anybody on Zoom have any questions or comments?
Okay, I'm not hearing you. So with that, we can make a motion unless there's questions from the Planning Commission. You'll have to unmute yourself if you have a question. Yeah, there you go.
Thank you. Okay. This question's actually from my husband.
If you put a property in for forever, then that puts a tremendous burden upon the property. Would you can, it seems like you should consider maybe so many years so that doesn't go with the property forever. Now, I've seen your moratorium on the, on the, on the restrictions. That way it wouldn't burden each property owner.
If I, if I understand, sorry, you're cutting out just a little bit, but if I understand your comment, it is to consider the short-term rental restriction only lasts for X number of years so that it doesn't cause a potential...
The way I understood it, that you were making it for long-term only, and that you were putting it for perpetuity on the property. And it seems like if you're making that sort of restriction, it should be, have a moratorium on it instead of perpetuity.
Yeah, and I think that's where I why I'm...
The future landowners aren't, so future prospective buyers aren't burdened with the same problem.
So they could convert about that housing?
Just, just an opinion.
So, yes, and to clarify that in perpetuity is only with the permit, the conditional use permit. So it's not a deed restriction and running with the land in that way. But the condition, as long as the conditional use permit is being actively on the property because the ADU is now there, if somebody wanted to change it, they would have to amend their ADU if they are, there's conditional use permit for the ADU. So if they want to change anything, that's how they would have to do it, is they would come before the county to make any changes or amendments to the use that they are trying to use that property for. Just like if they wanted to take away the fact that it's an ADU, that would remove the conditional use permit.
Okay, yeah, that's, that clarified it.
A deed restriction, but it is something that, as long as they have the ADU there, they're agreeing to run it with the way that they set it up this evening. And then after that, they would have to amend it.
That's, that sounds good.
Yeah. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Could they just state their name for the record?
Could you guys please just state your names for the record?
John Endorkas Bockelman.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing portion.
I made a motion to close the public hearing portion.
I have three seconds.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, at this point, the Planning Commission will consider a motion. We can't take any further public comment at this time, but you're welcome, obviously, to sit and listen in. Anybody have any comments or things they want to start with or just a motion?
It seems like it's pretty well cut and dried.
Yep. Add a long-term rental unit.
Yeah.
Let's do it.
As we wanted.
Agreed.
You have the reading materials.
Yes.
How, how are you ready?
We're ready.
Hi, Howard Trips, moved that the Planning Commission recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners of file number 23-08. A conditional use permit application for an accessory dwelling unit on a parcel of land of less than one acre pursuant to the standards of section 5.3.1 parenthesis B at 1608 Mountain Lincoln Drive, Leno, Colorado. Further finding that the approval criteria pursuant to the Lake County Land Development Code, section 3.6.1f, have been met as evidenced in the staff report dated June 12th, 2023, or file number 23-08. And do I read the conditional approval as far as that motion?
Yeah, with the following conditions.
Yeah, we have, all right, with the following conditions, I moved that the Planning Commission recommend conditional approval to the Board of County Commissioners of file number 23-08. A conditional use permit application for an accessory dwelling unit on a parcel of land less than one acre pursuant to the standards of section 5.3.1 parenthesis B at 1608 Mount Lincoln Drive, Leno, Colorado. Further finding that the approval criteria pursuant to Lake County Land Development Code, section 3.6.1 point F have been met as evidenced in the staff report dated June 12th, 2023, for file number 23-08. The conditions for approval are: One, approval is contingent upon all standards pursuant to LDC, section 5.3.1 parenthesis B, being adequately met at the time of building permit issuance. Two, all statements made by the applicant in the application and hearing shall be considered conditions of approval.
Can I get a second on the recommendation for conditional approval?
A second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, roll call Trips.
Here.
Joey Edwards?
Here.
Abby Dahman?
Aye.
Lynn, aye. I think they meant aye when they said here. Right?
It's just copying and editing.
All right. So our recommendation will be forwarded to the commissioners along with this taping for their next meeting, right?
Next week. Next week.
Yes.
Yes. So next week on Tuesday, we'll take the recommendation to the board and they'll make the final decision.
Maybe the necessary to specify the long-term rental portion either or not just go...
No, because it was part of the discussion in the application.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to updates.
All right. So we have two short-term rental town hall meetings. One happens this week on Thursday at the Schoolhouse in Twin Lakes. And I would love to, I'm asking today for volunteers from the Planning Commission. We're also gonna look for help from staff to, we're gonna have to, we're gonna need folks to help register people when they come in. We have some flip charts that we're gonna do kind of a dot voting system. So I'm looking for some volunteers that would like to, so we've got this Thursday from 6 to 8 at, in the Schoolhouse in Twin Lakes. And then we have freight on the 21st from 6 to 8. So really need some folks to come help out on one, both.
I can be in this Thursday.
The 21st.
I can definitely do the 21st this Thursday. I'm not sure that I'd be able to.
Okay.
I've got this week, oh, I knew the 21st.
Okay, all right. All right, Joey, you'll hang out with us on, on both or, and this, this one, this week?
This one for sure. I'll have to double check on the 21st, but I could definitely be in Twin Lakes.
Perfect, perfect. We're gonna ask that, tomorrow I have a work session with the Board of County Commissioners, give them an update on short-term rentals. Happy to do that this evening, give everybody kind of where we're at on that. And ask them to come and help and participate as well. The other, we do have a speaking spot open on, on, so on the 21st, if one of you would like to, what we, what we're hoping to do is just start the evening off kind of with an educational piece to explain to the public that, that has assembled, you know, what the Planning Commission's role is in a legislative process. And so encouraging the public, if they want, in this particular instance, unlike some other times, that they can reach out to you and provide you with input and information that you can share with staff. So I'm just recognizing that this is kind of one of those unique situations, kind of like backcountry, right, where you could have conversations with the public and bring back information and help it kind of inform the process. So we are looking for someone to just kind of explain what the Planning Commission does. I have each of these engagements, like maybe a three to four minute kind of, you know, I'm here representing the Planning Commission, we're a recommending body. And we'll help you with, with just a tiny little bit of a script if anybody would want to do that at either of those two. So we've got a slide deck that we're perfecting, and we should have something, I think, on it by tomorrow. And then we were gonna practice on Wednesday, just kind of run through it. Very basic, I just want to put a face to the Planning Commission, so.
I can help with the 21st unless somebody else wants to do it. So I'm willing and also not.
Okay. Okay, awesome. Thank you. Joey, since you're our 15th, would you be willing to?
Since you have no joy.
Sounds like you've been mulling holes.
Yeah, exactly. If you work up a draft on that.
Okay, yep, we will get you, you can kind of make it your own, but we'll give you just a couple talking points if that sounds good. So I was to send you out, we were just gonna do a, a rehearsal on Wednesday at 11:00, I think. Isn't that what we're thinking? But if, we can always work around your schedule, but if you want to join us and just kind of, us kind of go through the presentation, then you can do your part. Okay, sounds good. I will get that out. Super excited about that. So just to give you an update on short-term rentals, we are in the process of obviously working into this public engagement portion. I think I already kind of shared out that we've been through our compliance. We went through and identified all unlicensed operations. We gave last year's licensed holders three months to get into compliance this year. That was per the moratorium, and so now we're working with the non-compliant properties that we have out there. And we're continuing to monitor and watch for new ones that are coming online. We've had a couple come online. We are also in the process of reviewing some data. And we found that there's a lot of consulting companies or data companies out there that are, since short-term rentals are a very hot topic all over the nation, that a lot of companies are offering a lot of data for kind of a big price tag. And so we have a, through the tourism panel, we have been given access to some, which we didn't have to, you know, absorb the cost on, which has been really nice. But we're just going through that because their numbers are really high, about non-compliant properties, I think, to the tune of around 190. And that just didn't quite line up with where we've been on our data. So we're just looking at that to really see if there's anything in there. So we're just looking at that to really see if there's anything in there. Because, uh, so our, kind of our immediate is, it, it seems like the data, their data hadn't been refreshed, part of it. Maybe there's some duplication, maybe they've picked up on some things that, um, were actually being rented for thirty days and they're not STRs. Um, so, and, and a lot of the, uh, information that we've looked at and branded, let me just tell you, we're very early at looking at the data, and we're going to continue to. Um, but one of the things that we found right away is that a lot of the properties were in the city and not in the county too. So, um, we can, you know, happy, I think the city has access to that data, um, as well, and so they're probably, putting some effort into reviewing it, but, um, we'll continue to look at it. But our first thought is, um, what we've seen so far is maybe those numbers are a little off or quite a bit off from where, where we actually are in that compliance. So, you know, we're right at, um, CC, are we about a hundred and forty licensed?
Hundred and twenty-seven.
Hundred and twenty-seven. I should know that number. I ask you that all the time. I think I say one forty and you say one twenty-seven. So we're, we're, um, currently have a hundred and twenty-seven, um, licensed. So then, um, we have gone into, oh, go ahead.
What's the percentage of?
Oh, housing units?
Yeah.
Oh, that's a really good question. We actually had that data before. Um, I know, I'm trying to think what our number was. We were way under, like, the twelve percent is in the city's cap twelve, and I think we were only at like seven or eight percent.
It was under ten.
Yeah, we were under ten percent. Yeah, um, because we, we did have, um, so, well, that's a good question. We'll, um, look at that, but I, I think that's about where we're. We, we were maintaining and kind of watching that. So I would say the moratorium came in because we were identifying that the questions that were coming in, or, you know, we kind of felt like, wow, this is becoming, um, something that we probably are going to start issuing a lot more licenses. I think we got in front of it a little bit. But our saturation, I think the other concern that we have is the, the amount of saturation in different areas and making sure, you know, we've got a lot in Twin Lakes. So again, why we're doing the two different town hall meetings, um, to really look at the different areas. Um, we are waiting for community builders to confirm that they can help us with some technical support. We are also working with legal, um, to isolate some very specific, um, legal questions that we have. We, we've had a lot of, um, information come in from short-term rental, um, uh, owners that would really like to short-term rent that are primary residents. And they suggest there's a significant difference between their ability to sustain homeownership and second homeownership. You know, that's just putting that information out. But we want to make sure there are other codes that give preferences to primary, uh, ownership, and we just want to make sure that that is, um, done properly and legally if that would become an out, an outcome. But I do think as we go into these town hall meetings, based on the information we've had and who we've talked to, I think you'll hear about that. So we just wanted to kind of look at if there's, um, you know, how other codes look at that as well.
Is that a room or is that an ADU or?
So they clean up, they, they give them run of the house.
All of the tenants.
Okay. So they, yeah, they, um, so by definition, and that's another thing that we will look at through our moratorium process, by definition, a single, a, um, short-term rental is, is run of a single-family home and not a room. So I think that we're going to look at, do we need to further define that or not? But, you know, um, our definition is that it's the whole house. And so pri, a lot of primary, um, are doing, um, you know, August and July, for obvious reasons. So, um, you, you probably hear about that a little bit, so really ask legal to dive into that. Um, through the lodging feasibility study, um, that, um, Adam DeCharm is working on, um, their consultant is going to look at the possibility of capping and what that would do, in, uh, in relationship to, uh, lodging feasibility, as well as taking a look at what kind of impact, um, short-term rentals are having on market value. So we're looking at that. And, um, then we're, the department is in the midst of engagement with a cost recovery company, and they're also going to look at the fees associated with short-term rental. So, um, those are, uh, our window is getting smaller and smaller though for our technical assistance. And, um, and then of course, we're looking at the environmental aspects of things as well. I think we talked about that a little bit last time.
Will.
So, sorry.
Oh, go ahead. Will Adam's study stuff come in time for you guys to?
They're going to front-load that.
Okay.
So it's coming in in August.
Okay.
So, um, it's going to be close. Our September deadline's going to be closer if we have a code amendment. Um, I think there's a possibility, um, that we will find ourselves needing some notice time in order to get it into the code. But we will have, I think, have a fair idea, um, by September where we are, and we may have a, a code amendment pending. Um, update on that. I think I've given you most of the other updates. Like, like I said, we're doing a cost recovery study for the department. Uh, really excited about that. We haven't increased fees in twenty years. Um, next, uh, the second meeting in July, we're going to be bringing you a group camp, um, in Twin Lakes and kind of the Bald Town area, the, uh, twenty-four and eighty-two area. Um, we're also going to be bringing you a rezone, a rezone application of, um, someone asking a property owner to come out of Backcountry into recreational. Um, so those two are being noticed and you'll see those, um, you'll hear from us at the, um, second hearing in July. We have, uh, almost finished our completeness review of Gateway. Gateway PUD and major subdivision is in. Um, and we will be, um, sending them their completeness review this week, I believe. And, um, so it'll probably be just a little bit before we hear back from, from them with their actual application. Um, and then we have another, uh, conditional use permit for an automotive repair, um, use. And I anticipate that we're bringing that to you, um, the first meeting in August to meet, so we can meet requirements. Crazy how quickly our summer is going to fly by, so. Those are the ones that pending. I think we have about six to, uh, seven lot consolidations that are currently pending. Um, and we do have a Backcountry structured license that is, has come in and is pending, or hasn't been issued yet?
It's been issued.
It's been issued.
Yep.
So.
And the Fairview, we haven't heard any more on it.
So Fairview, we have not, but we will, um, share, uh, out that, uh, we will be reaching out to that property owner. We have found that they do have to cross another private parcel, um, in order to have access. So that, um, property owner has come forward, we've done some research on it, and do see and recognize that it's not just the Dink, uh, Williford parcel that needed access, but there is another, um, parcel as well. So, um, they are going to have to, uh, look at access. So there's, there's a few more layers, um, uh, but I have not heard any, um, other updates from them. I do believe that they are meeting tomorrow with the, um, residents for responsible development, um, to just for them to kind of, uh, tell them some of their concerns, um, if the application were to move forward. So, um, I know that is happening, uh, tomorrow, I believe. And, uh, Bryce or Cece, can you think of any other department updates that we want to share out?
Not really. There's, those outdoor and guide operations, trying to reach out to them and get them, you know, all to be in compliance by the time the moratorium on the OHV steps in this fall. So, um, those are still out there. We're still working on trying to, you know, get them back in. But of course, it's no longer, we're, we're not, we're longer worried about winter. Come August, we'll be really worried about winter and not have enough time, so. We're, we're trying to get them all into compliance though.
Cece, anything that you can think of?
I don't think so.
Okay, Chris?
I wanted to take this opportunity though to introduce or in some instances reintroduce John Castello, who has joined the county attorney's office for the summer, is our summer law clerk. Um, he's going to be working with CPD on a lot of some of the research and legal questions that come up on pending matters and code issues and stuff like that, so I wanted to, if you see his name on the cell, that's why. To have the opportunity to introduce him to you and anything else that, John, he's, he's just finished his first year of law school in Kansas City. And, um, so we're hoping based on his prior experience with CPD that we'll be able to not only lure him back for summers, but potentially after he graduates, come back and, uh, and provide this community with, uh, much-needed legal assistance in land use matters and other things.
Awesome, welcome.
Kansas City, we're giving it much of a chance.
It's hot and humid in Kansas City.
Very happy to be here.
Yeah.
Yay, yay, awesome.
Um, yeah, super excited to have him, um, here and just his, history with the department has been invaluable to help us. Uh, really, um, helping us a lot on compliance. So as you can imagine, um, this is the time of year the compliance gets a little bit busy. Um, and so Chris and John are certainly, um, providing us with a lot of support on, um, looking at some situations that have kind of lingered for a while. So those are, those are, uh, coming up. But I think that's pretty much all our updates. And then, you know, tonight, we were just hoping to kind of, uh, show out the map. We, we gave everybody the link and it's just such an amazing tool. Um, but I think we just want to continue to have momentum into these discussions about future growth planning, and I think it's just so telling when we start looking at what, um, Bryce refers to as the blackout map. So it's, um.
No more ado here?
Yeah, I'm happy to drive too.
Yep.
To show you, but.
Please.
The, I put together a, a layer that was kind of spurred on by our discussions that some prior planning commission meetings. Where we're talking about, you know, like, Lake County looks like it has so much land, incredible amount of land, there's houses very few places, there's roads very few places. But that's kind of deceptive, and then there's actually a pre, there's a dearth of developable land, right? There's a, there's a lack of land that could be used for residential or commercial development in any kind, especially ones that are a little bit more large-scale. So, this is an app that I'm going to send, you guys have the link for, but I want you guys to play around with this and let me know if there's another, any other things, layers, analyses, natural features, environmental things you'd like to see on it that would help inform your, your work or your, just your thoughts and discussions. So this is just a overview of the map. These roads are currently color-coordinated. That was just kind of something we were doing with Commissioner Fiedler, um, in preparation for our road use guide for the special use permit for OHVs. It's coming later this summer or fall. There's a bunch of layers over here on what's technically called the hamburger stack in GIS language. And the biggest one is, yeah, that blackout layer that I was telling you about. So you put that on. This is a really handy visual. Everything in blue includes industrial mining zoning, Backcountry-zoned parcels, federal land, BLM, Forest Service, Fish and Wildlife Service, lands that are already under conservation easement, and lands with active mining operations as of last year. So this does include Webster. I'm not sure where the status is. I heard they stopped work, but it's still a pretty bombed-out parcel that I think would have some pretty big barriers to development in the future anyways. It's not perfect. I'm seeing a lot of errors where there's parcels of land that should have an account associated that don't have anything. So you'll see some, you know, random parcels down here that are actually Backcountry-zoned but aren't showing up with anything. But I think this just, at a glance, shows you that we have a large county, or it's actually a small county, but we have a lot of land here. And very little of that land is even eligible for development. Everything that's not in blue includes current subdivisions as well. So, you know, for instance, over here, this is Beaver Lakes, right? This is not Massive Truck Club. This is the E-Hill, Reaver Ridge area, Panarc, Twin Lakes. Um, the Aurora parcel stands out pretty well here. Then you have, you know, the, um, what is that? That's a Smith Ranch now, but the Aurora parcel is not shown because it has an active mining operation on it, right? So it's not developable either. Another couple of things to note is that this also includes some huge portions of land which are owned by water providers. So Pueblo owns the majority of this, Escudero Flat Sub here. Donala owns this little section back here. Donala's a utility district, um, in the Air Force Academy area in Colorado Springs. And so I think this is just a great map to show everyone when I kind of just try to emphasize like, look, we have very little land left. And what we're, what decisions we make in the next five to ten years are truly what we're going to be stuck with for perpetuity because after that, we have to start tearing stuff down to build new stuff. You can start looking at other layers in here. I'll just kind of show you some other ones that are here. You know, if you want to look at what BLM and Forest Service are, Forest Service is green, BLM is tan there. Lands under conservation easement. So those are private lands under conservation easement. Forest Service road network. Designated roadless areas in Lake County, actually, which kind of surround a lot of our Backcountry parcels, especially in the, um, west of Twin Lakes area.
Can you just define what that, like, what jurisdiction that is and when you say roadless?
Sure, so that, that is a congressionally designated roadless area. So that is a complement to, and I should have it on here, but it's not on here, the wilderness areas.
Okay.
But the wilderness areas, you know, encompass a lot of these kind of surrounding areas. These, this is like a buffer between wilderness and developable. But it is a congr, it's, has all the congressional protections on the land or, you know, lack of land rights or property rights, you could say, too. If you can zoom in a little closer to the actual Leadville area, you can put on our sewer district pipeline network, our water pipeline network. If you really want to see what the districts themselves are, those are on there as well. They don't match up with those pipeline networks one-to-one, but it's a good, good idea to look at that and know what's in the district and not in the district, because if you're in the district, it's a lot harder to exempt yourselves from the district's regulations and use. Three-mile buffer, this, the city of Leadville and Lake County did a lot of planning work in two thousand and fifteen that's associated with our past comp plan, dealing with the three-mile buffer, and so I just put that on there just so you have an idea. The state kind of wants to see three-mile plans when we're talking about long-term planning.
Which just feels funny for them.
I know, it really is, because you're like, well, what do you want the whole county to be there today?
And, you know, you can see within the three-mile plan is all of the stuff we have developed and a lot of our developable lands. Um, city zoning, county zoning, the districts. I, this is a really interesting one in my world. Obviously, I'm buried above the water. These in shaded blue is the land covered by the Lake County Augmentation Plan. And so theoretically, you know, we have to figure out the nuts and bolts of how that enterprise and augmentation plan is actually administered. But theoretically, the county can augment the water rights it owns into well rights or water rights in any of this shaded blue area.
So if someone wanted to develop, okay, give me, give me an example.
Right, so, there is a.
I missed the day that you did your awesome.
Okay. Yeah, so like, say there's a parcel down here in Dowan Tracks that was subdivided off by deed after, in nineteen-eighty-one.
Yeah.
Right? You're not allowed to do that because that's past the subdivision regulations going in. It was not a legally subdivided parcel. How does that water, how does that?
Get water, yeah.
Right? There's a subdivision exemption process. Or they can now not get exempted and instead pay the county to augment their well right. Because they don't actually have a well right as the parcel sits, but now the county is willing to give them a fraction of our water so they can pump it out of the ground and will release a, a port, you know, proportion amount of water back into Arkansas somewhere to make sure that the entire watershed is whole.
Similarly, if a developer didn't have the water rights.
So we'll get into, so watch this. Urban residential parcels, okay? Heather, I'm going to pick on you because your parcel's just so big and easy to look at, right? This is Heather's parcel. It's eighty acres, correct? If Heather wanted to make this into a subdivision, it doesn't currently have water or sewer access. But with the augmentation plan, she could subdivide the parcel into little smaller house lots and each house lot could buy a share of county water and augment their water through the plan through that.
Or the developer would have.
Or the developer can, yeah.
In order to pass our subdivision regulations, the developer would have to buy the water rights from the next county to then augment each one to be able to have a well. I mean, in that case, just to make you wrong for a second, but not purposely. But because the water is right there at Silver Hills, when a parcel is within so many feet of the water line, they have to pull apart the water.
Bad example.
So.
Here, a better example is.
But a good example would be one that's not connected, like Half Moon or something, right? If somebody wanted to develop that into a subdivision.
Right.
They wouldn't, they would have water rights to drill one well per forty acres or thirty-five acres, but beyond that. They wouldn't, they would have water rights to drill one well per 40 acres or 35 acres, but beyond that, they would have to get additional water and they have to either purchase those water rights or purchase them from the county.
Right.
Through that augment.
And so currently a lot of people purchase Twin Lakes water shares and then go through the water court process to augment their water, like a commercial water right, with Twin Lakes water. What the county water enterprise will allow them to do is instead of purchasing those shares on the open market and going through the decree process, they just pay us for a share because we've already gone through the decree process. We've already established that we can augment our water in that zone. Right? But like this 160 acre ranch here, if they wanted to buy this up into little three acre ranchettes, they would have to augment each lot.
So that's a, I mean, so that's a, I'm not saying that we would do that. I don't know, but like that's a lever. If you don't want the development to happen, you don't.
Absolutely. And so those are discussions to, to.
I got a boogie.
Okay.
Bye, Heather. Have a good evening.
Yeah.
Good night.
Good discussion. I hate to miss this.
We're going to have discussions on like the water processing to kind of have some public feedback and engagement on that to come.
Oh man.
Oh, sorry.
Taking pictures with bear on my balcony at 10:00 at night. My dog woke me up.
No bear?
Bear was out in the picnic area, tarred down the bird feeder. So I thought, I'll get a picture of this. So I got on my camera, go down, get on the deck, go to, go down the steps and missed the last step. Camera's busted, bear's gone.
Didn't even get the picture.
Didn't get a picture. Good to see you.
Have a good day, Heather.
I think, you know, another scenario to start considering, this is so good because this is exactly what we need to start considering for creating this growth plan, is ADUs. You know, ADUs have never been really something that we contemplated in, on anything except that has centralized utilities. So, you know, it, it's a game changer, you know, and not just for subdivision.
Right. Like I couldn't add an ADU to my house because I have an in-house use well. So if we wanted an ADU, we would need additional water rights to do it. And that's something the aug plan could potentially assist with should we want it. And I think that what is really cool about this map is A, it shows how important it is for us to pay attention to what we have left. But I think it also helps us in some cases not get in the weeds about like, yeah, but then this one thing could happen. And you're like, there's not very many places that could happen. So is it likely and do we need to go down that rabbit hole? And so I think that that's what makes this really fun to play with because you can really zoom into these areas, you know, just outside of town and be like, okay, where is infrastructure closest to and/or land that even, you know, you can visualize it. You're like, oh, I know the land looks like out there. There's no, you know, is somebody going to develop a subdivision on the Arkansas right there where it's a floodplain? Probably not. So, you know, we can kind of focus on where you end up. And then, and then using the zone district layer to then say, okay, so those properties that we've identified are, are the most probable for development are zoned to this or this. What are our zone regulations for those and are they adequate for those spots?
Yeah. So to explain some of these other layers I have, because I prepared these as part of a discussion actually with the commissioners over a year ago. But, right, looking at each zone district on its own, and this is Ceteris Paribus. So all else equal, we're not talking about access to water or utilities. Just by code, what parcels are able to be divided into five or more lots? Per zone district, given the zone district's minimum lot size, right? So urban residential obviously has a smaller minimum lot size. So smaller lots can be divided into five. These are all the lots that are zoned over in residential that are eligible to be major subdivision. And this doesn't count PUDs or any sort of like extending circumstances. This is just purely by code, these lots can be divided into more than five lots. Residential multifamily, I put all of them down in Balltown just because we have like two left. And, you know, obviously you can put a lot of multifamily on there. And this is actually not updated since the rezone. So sorry I'll review that. Rec, same thing. What's eligible for five man? Look, there's, these are not even conserved since then as well. So yeah, old mapping layers, but I'll update them just, but the, the concept is the same is that you can play around with these layers to see, you know, commercial industrial, this is just all commercial industrial land in the county.
And it's all owned by the county.
It's all owned by the county. Actually, this is what I found was really interesting after I get through these layers. So business parcels, ag residential zoned that are major subdivision eligible, ag forestry that are major subdivision eligible. I think this is the one we have to pay attention to because ag forestry, we obviously have a lot of larger lots, but I would say a lot of these lots are probably not the best to subdivide, right? Or they have environmental concerns that might outweigh the developmental advantages. You have VOCC owned parcels that are major subdivision eligible. Right? We have the golf course, ACA's gravel pit essentially, that one parcel that surrounds Centennial Heights, and then all the stuff around the airport. VOCC owns a bunch of other stuff, but it's all in industrial mining or backcountry zone. Now, here's what I was talking about. These are major subdivision eligible parcels that also lie within the aug plan. And so yes, these are not near town, but you could subdivide these lots and provide them with the water theoretically, given our aug plan. We have a lot of decision-making to have about what the aug plan will serve, right? Like Dan said, ADUs, residences, non-compliant parcels, or do we want to just open it up to everyone to divide it how they see fit? You know, I think this area would be an interesting thing to see when you, if you open it up to all subdivision. Old zoning, CPW managed lands is almost like conserv- conservation lands, just a little bit more specific. Parcels, if you wanted to see individual parcels, power lines. But what I think is really interesting is if you look at unsuitable lands, so you look at, you blackout everything and then you look into, yeah, but what does the county own? County owns quite a bit of the, I'm sorry, let me take off the log. Right. So you can see the county actually, that bit of land by the airport is so important because it's, it's like the last large intact piece of land we have in the county. And luckily the county happens to own it.
This is awesome, Bryce. Thanks. I think this is super helpful.
And I'm happy to add any new layers, any new analyses, you know, if you want to see like what.
Doing the analysis now, like you have all the information and now it's like really IDing like.
Absolutely. And that's where you guys are.
We, everyone should.
Question, your feedback.
Do you have a layer for the 100 year floodplain?
No, I don't. There are no, there's no digital floodplain information available on the county, at least not officially.
There's the FEMA, the FEMA maps.
Right.
Those are pretty old.
We have the FEMA paper maps and FEMA's.
Doesn't have a digital file for you?
Not for Lake County. Can you believe that? And they even, they never even analyzed the city of Leadville.
Oh my gosh.
So College Park is in the city of Leadville. It's not even on the floodplain maps, even though we know there's a known floodplain there. And so FEMA has told me that they're updating this and they're digitizing it in the process of that. I'm waiting with bated breath for that because I want to see it because it's super valuable for my job as the floodplain administrator and for development and decision-making.
Does this one have the wetlands on it though?
No.
No, this one doesn't.
I can add, I'll add wetlands, repairing areas because they're a little bit different, but pretty similar regulations, you know, around them.
That's insane. So can you pull flood insurance?
Yeah. And we said, we, but we use the, we use the paper maps just.
We use the paper maps.
Digital, yes. And we do LOMAs and we can do, yeah, we can, we, they just don't have it digital. So we still participate. Yeah, in the firms and so geez, we still participate. It's just we don't, just don't have digital info.
Go ahead.
A small minority of people and/or institutions are starting to question the traditional notion that bigger is better, growth is better, more jobs, more people. Is there a vision that the county has, one way or another?
I don't know if there's, I don't know that I could say that there's a unified vision yet on that. You know, I think there's definitely, and I think this will kind of bring that out, this conversation that we're kind of starting tonight, that hopefully will continue in several work sessions with both the commissioner and the planning commission. And then eventually also, you know, engaging the public on that. You know, I think that there, and one of the reasons that I think we felt like this was so valuable is for exactly that reason, that it really kind of highlights the fact that we're only so big. So we can talk all day long about trying to get more and more and more here, but at the end of the day, there's only so much that can happen appropriately. And so I think that this helps us decide what that, what that looks like. But at the, you know, in my opinion, at the end of all this, there's only so much that that can be. I know, I was trying.
At this point, the water enterprise doesn't really have any water. If Box Creek ever happens, I think it's 215 acres.
Yeah, that's true.
So we have 200 total units that we're calling, we're calling units. It's one-twentieth an acre foot units. We've been told that one-twentieth an acre foot is basically what a reasonably sized house needs for an in-house use. So we are playing around with, this is what we have, is we have 10 acre feet, so 200 total units of water enterprise water to use at the very beginning of the enterprise. Hopefully we expand, right? When Box Creek reservoir, right now we have 40 acre feet plus 20 and change is, that's, we have 60 some acre feet every year. When Box Creek gets built, Lake County has the right stuff to 5,000 acre feet in that reservoir, right? So it'll be a game changer, but that is not in our control and from what we understand, it's at least 15 years away. So.
I've looked at that tenth of an acre foot. Normally I look at 100 gallons per day per person. I think we're only going to be able to bathe on Saturday night on that number.
Fair enough. Well, this is, you know, I'm, this is a number that's been given to us by other water conservancy districts that are in our area that do the same kind of thing. And that's the unit they've used. And so if you think you're going to use one-twenty an acre foot, in those districts, you're eligible to buy more than one. You know, you can buy two or three shares if you think that would be adequate. But that's the, the minimum unit we've kind of decided on that it's viable for enterprise. And that's the number we can start playing around with when we start thinking about like what uses would we actually be okay with using that water for, right? Because that's.
Golf course.
Right.
Preparation.
Well, so actually our golf course is using a significant part of the county's water portfolio right now. And we're trying to move them away from using the county's water and making them more into a customer, right? Because they are some of the private enterprise, so.
Last time I asked Sarah progress on the water enterprise, she didn't say much.
Fair enough.
We're working on it.
Yeah. So I'll say too, we're working on it.
Hey Anne, can we just double check that nobody on Zoom has any questions? Just because we never can see them if we're sharing.
Yeah. Does anyone on Zoom have any question? Questions? John, Dorcas?
So, I mean, I don't know how much we want to, you know, kind of dive into this. I, I think that this is a super fun tool that maybe, if we can reshare again, specifically just this in an email to planning commission and county commissioners and, and go into kind of detail, please. You know, maybe homework instructions that we're all playing with this and making notes of areas. Yeah, questions we have.
Specific parameters with which to operate in. So you can, so we don't digress.
So maybe I can get with you guys and we can come up with like three or four things that we want for the first, like check out this and see what you think about X, Y, and Z. And then we can come and talk about that. And then the next time we can expand on that to something further.
My question is, is the, besides wetlands and repairing areas, do any other kind of data sources jump out at you as being useful for this? I'm thinking well permit data might be good as well.
I think, I love the wetlands and repairing areas. I think that's really helpful. It seems to me based on this map so far that we know where the water is, we know where the sewer is, we know that the aug plan covers the rest of it, that I think that's enough. But if somebody feels like additional well data is helpful, but obviously nothing's not helpful.
I think the well data is also useful just so you, it'll really make it evident like where the hotspots of development have already happened.
It'd be nice to see where it clusters. So yeah, it'd be nice to have.
But yeah, I think just to, yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think I need to brush up on just like what major subdivision means. You know, some of like, yeah, just like what is possible.
Major subdivision is five of the parcels, but.
Yeah. But yeah, and, and considering PUD and, you know, I mean, it could be all kinds of things.
Isn't minor only two?
No, remember we, we changed it. Remember we changed that in like 16 or 17, I think.
So minor is four or fewer and major is five or more?
Five or more is major, yep. We decided we wanted to, yeah, because it, it did use to be a smaller number and then we upped minor.
And then keep in mind though.
There's always PUD.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is nice because we get a little bit more negotiation and, and, and discussion pieces on that PUD process. And, but, but this still allows us to, do we need to add more conversational pieces to that PUD plan? But I think that, you know, really wrapping our brains around, and that's where the parcel lines being added to this is helpful too. Because like if you have this map open and maybe you don't need Lake County's parcels, but yeah, if you do this, you're like, oh, look, there's a bunch of little parcels right there, but they're not going to, you know what I mean? Like it's like, oh, what are the actual big ones? And there's just not a lot of them. So I think that's where it's really helpful to kind of understand where it goes and where it's appropriate and. Yeah. And, you know, further down the road after we're done kind of discussing zoning and where big subdivision development goes, I think this also ends up being really helpful to the ADU discussion, rentals discussion, like all of this is helpful to just say, what do we want Lake County to look like in 10 years or in four years when these are all developed? Like what are we, what is it going to be?
Yeah.
And try to get everybody kind of, I mean, not everybody obviously, but as many people as possible on the same page.
Right. I feel like this, it's one thing to say 80% of land is already locked up. It's another thing to see it, you know? I think visuals really help with those discussions.
Well, and then the reality of even the 20% that's left.
Based on geography, based on.
Well, just like smart development is not to have major developments out far from city center.
Exactly.
So, so you're really looking at what, 10 parcels?
That's, that's how I see it exactly. Like, I mean, as soon as you start looking in, okay, what matches? Like it's close to town, it's close to utilities.
Yeah. Because yet you want, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And it helps us in, you know, the conversation we had a couple of meetings ago too, on even inclusionary zoning and stuff. It's again, this is where, to me, it's like hard to start talking about regulating, you know, going down something that could be a really long process or something that has possibly little impact. But maybe we'll go through this and be like, oh, it would still be applicable to me. There he is. Great. But I think that that's where, this is going to help us decide what of those paths we want to go down. Cause some obviously are going to take a really long time and some may be quick and just great ideas that we can just morph through zoning code amendments. So.
I mean, it'll just come down to like, yeah, once those parcels are gone, then it is redevelopment. And then that's when it can get wholly unattainable if we keep on the path that we're on right now. So that's when inclusionary down could.
Yeah, yeah. If it did something down there, yeah.
Well, the other thing that I should bring up is that it's not going to occur this week, but I do think next week we will be, staff has been asked to coordinate a work session for the board of county commissioners on a Nexus study to look at impact fees countywide. That was precipitated by an ask in reference to, you know, the inclusionary ask of a housing needs update and a Nexus study specific to inclusionary. So that discussion was brought to the board of county commissioners, the commissioners.
So that discussion was brought to the Board of County Commissioners, the commissioners, really, we, we quickly identified that the um, housing coalition was really talking very, very specific about creating a deed in lieu, or a fee in lieu. Um, and the board really was thinking more of impact fees generally um, as, for a Nexus study. And so um, we are scheduled to try to put together a work session sometime next week, so also have the um, the invite when we can, at one of the work sessions that the board has opportunities. But we really want to make sure that we get everybody at the table early in those discussions to determine uh, where we want to land on potential Nexus study in, in, as far as invoking impact fees on development. So um, kind, in the same line of our um, that inclusionary ask, um, but much, but much broader. So um, that's where the board asked for us to go with that. And so um, that'll be next week and we'll make sure that you're included on those invites.
Awesome. Well, all, oop, go ahead.
Well, I think there might be some public engagement on, because I mean, this is great math, but you know, there are probably things you don't, you don't know um, that might, you know, that sooner rather than later might be, might be helpful to get some input.
Absolutely, I think we'll have some public engagement on the water enterprise by hopefully the end of the summer or the fall. Right, so. Yeah.
And then it'll help on the water piece.
On the water, and then this is more of the smart growth plan.
Yeah, yeah, and I think this'll, this will need a little bit of organization, thought, thought organization before we're ready to kind of present to the, the public as, you know, um, engaging feedback. Because right now, I think we all have to rally our thoughts and like, and digest a lot of the data.
Comp plan updates, or is?
Right, so this is all, um, so the thought is that we would start these discussions in preparation for the comp plan update in two thousand and twenty-five, um, which would certainly um, be a public engagement heavy, you know, as we create our new master plan. So this was internally, um, looking at this from the lens of land use, housing, and economics um, as we prep ourselves in preparation for a new master plan. So that's this portion, but there will be incremental work associated with it, like the short-term rental engagement, the water engagement, that we'll definitely want the public um, helping us inform that work. So we'll be bringing out different um, segments of, of the work as a whole that we'll want to make sure that we are um, going out and, and getting good input from the community on those pieces.
Yeah, and if there's, if there's something that we identify through this process to me saying, oh my gosh, that code amendment right now would be awesome.
Yeah.
That'll be a big public process as well for a code amendment, so. Um, yeah, so I'll plan to get with Bryce and Anne and come up with just some like general prompt questions for that email and then get that to the commissioners and planning commission. To see if they can, are, are we able to do this again?
So we have two, we can continue this progress um, and, um, and just kind of for the, our next two, and then we're gonna start getting hit with a lot of land use applications. So we have um, the second meeting in um, here in June, and then our first in July. So we have two upcoming meetings that we can continue kind of this work session kind of discussion. Um, so rolling this out tonight, that, and then we'll get together, formulate some questions and start kind of looking at this in incremental digestible pieces. Um, but we do have two more opportunities to just continue the momentum and then look at, at kind of our next steps.
Cool. Great. Bryce, this is awesome, I'm excited about this layer.
Yeah, I'm glad you liked it.
Visual is.
So now we'll add some more layers and clean up the other ones, and yeah, I hope it helps.
Awesome, yeah, let's plan on that and hopefully we can just knock some good conversations out in the next couple meetings. I think it'll be, it'll be good. Um, any other questions or?
You said a work session Wednesday for the short-term rental public meetings?
So um, there, let's see, so tomorrow, um, there's a work session with the board where we'll be giving the same short-term rental update to them. Um, Wednesday would be the, um, and I'll email that over to you. So the work session is already on the commissioners for Tuesday. Wednesday, I will send out rehearsal at eleven o'clock for your speaking part on the um, short-term rental. And then Thursday, um, there is another work session by the Board of County Commissioners on there where they'll be doing um, some updates on housing, um, and some other general land use updates on, as well. So there's work sessions with the county commissioners Tuesday, and Wednesday, and Thursday this week. And then um, but the, the Nexus study that I'm trying to put together for the work session would be next week.
Gotcha.
And I'll send out, um, as soon as I kind of have that queued up with them, it'll be Tuesday or Thursday next week.
Okay.
Okay.
I move we adjourn today's meeting.
Second.
Thank you, everybody, for attending. Go Nuggets.
Yeah, prompt, uh, prompt end to the meeting timely.
Yeah.
Can get home.